All right. Good evening, everybody. Calling to order, City Council Regular Meeting Tuesday, November 15th. I'll have our city clerk do our roll call.
Mayor Kayla Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb. Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Otuja Endipure.
Here.
Councilmember Rosheen O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. So next, we have Cub Scout PAC 225 doing our flag ceremony.
Audience attention, color guard attention. Please rise for the presentation of the colors. Scouts salute. All others, please put your hand over your heart. Color guard advance. Color guard halt. Color guard post the colors. Color guard honor the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two, color guard may be dismissed. Oh, audience may be c-.
Great. Thank you so much. And if you wanted to stay for public comment, please do. Okay, so next, we have our land acknowledgement. Do I have anyone who has that up? Or I can do it real fast. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights on this land, specifically this Noqami Indian tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial. All right, next, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, movement second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, 7-0. We are approved. So next, we have public comment. Sorry, I forgot to grab the sheet. If we have anyone in the room, we'll start in here and then move to Zoom. Thank you. All right, we have some library folks. So Michelle is first.
That had helped. I do have a booming voice. Well, good evening, Mayor Clark and council members. I'm Michelle Drovdahl, the Library Regional Manager of the Cascade Region, which the Samamish Library is a part of. And with me is Irene Wixstrom, the Librarian and Information Services Manager. And we're here today to share some facts and highlight some programs at the library which illustrate our connections with Samamish, where we support the city's values such as inclusiveness and family-friendly environments. We'd like to call attention to the flyer that you have in hand. It demonstrates that Samamish is one of the busiest libraries of the 50 locations in the King County Library System. For example, take a look at our physical checkouts, which is 5,37949 physical checkouts. And below that are the digital checkouts. So, and now Irene will talk about the programs we were able to provide for the people of Samamish.
So for welcoming week, Mayor Clark came and read a story and helped the children make a fun craft. And later, perhaps, you may have seen the Bulgarian dancers on the plaza. Just last month, we celebrated Diwali and Halloween. Together, it's Diwaleween. They used oranges to make cute little lanterns, which, by the way, were not lit in the library. These programs highlight the values of inclusiveness and connectedness that are so important to the city of Samamish. Our summer reading program was very successful, encouraging children to have fun while maintaining their reading skills during the summer. Our librarians reach out to children with storytimes on the plaza and do crafts related to their reading. We had 100 people making slime on the plaza. For teens, we offered Life After High School, an umbrella program, which includes how to enroll in Running Start, where students can sign up for college classes tuition-free. For the adults, we have two book groups, English and Chinese, that meet monthly. For the 55-plus audience, we sponsor Wisdom Cafes at the Senior Center. And we did welcome some adults into our slime-making program, too. We have a very active Friends of the Library who support us by sponsoring many of our programs with money they earn at their book sales. In fact, at their last book sale, they made $2,500 in just seven hours. Thank you, and we hope that you and yours will be able to attend one of our many programs. Please check out our schedule online at kclis.org.
Thank you very much for your time, and we hope to see you right next door at the Samamish Library. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you both. All right, next, we have Jennifer.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jennifer Coombs, and I am the Executive Director of Essence Health and Research. And because we have a little bit of an audience here, I'm going to tell you guys a little bit about what I do. Essence Health and Research is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit in Samamish, and it provides clinical nutrition services, clinical research to help sort of further along standard of care for medical conditions and yoga services and public outreach for people who are in need. Essence Health and Research was a part of the Human Services Grant Cycle this time around and was rejected for funding. And so I've been at this for a couple months now to try to get the council and the Human Services Commission to work together to provide at least a $5,000 grant for this particular nonprofit that has been serving Samamish and surrounding communities for about three years now. And so at this time, it's still not there. And that means that the Human Services Commission, the Human Services Department, and the City Council at this time has not worked together to make this happen. So tonight, I've been working with Karen Howe, and I wanted to know if you've actually heard anything back from the Human Services Commission to see if there was any approval of the $5,000 grant. And it's just a yes or a no. Any heard back? Okay, that's all I need. So at this time, I just want you guys to be aware of how difficult this is for a nonprofit manager to be able to work with this particular government to be able to get funding. So my hope is that tonight, that the City Council, without the Human Services Commission, can actually approve this grant for $5,000. It's going to take a lot of courage for you guys because you guys know that I've been at this for a couple months now. So I would encourage you guys to take a step in courage to make an amendment tonight to approve $5,000 for this particular nonprofit. And I would appreciate your help. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mary?
Hi, my name's Mary Victor. I lived in Samamish for 22 years. For public comment tonight, I wanted to speak to one of your consent items. You have a consent item number three. Normally, you just pass those without talking, but I wanted to bring your attention to it because it's got the master fee schedule for the city, and within that are a lot of fees. The stormwater fees are highlighted quite a bit because you've been doing a stormwater rate study, which that passed so that you would have enhanced level of service, which is great. And then you're looking at doing a 6.25% increase, which sounds like a lot, but it's about $24 per house per year, so it's $2 a month. And I want you to think about that because the stormwater management fees, sometimes called the swim fees, they can only be used for stormwater. They can't be used for other things. And if you're short on any situation with stormwater, the stormwater rate study, those fees and that increase are something that you, as council, can tap into and decide to look at because just a little bit of increase can make a $60,000, $70,000, maybe $100,000 difference, where it really is only a few dollars to people. I also will say I've been advocating publicly for stormwater management, better code and regulations and enforcement for that since 2015. There's only been a few rate studies. There was one in 2005, 2012. I think they did the first one in '16 or '18, '19, and then they're doing it. I think it is a good thing to do them on a three-year schedule. But I'll also tell you, even though we have excellent staff and management, especially for stormwater, they've been short people for a long time. So I hope that you know you need to have bodies to be able to do the work. Mark Cross said a long time ago, he was on council for eight years, he said, you know, they have $3 million every year to do roads and improve them, but they only have enough staff to do $2 million every year. So you kind of got behind. So for a bunch of years, you had to kind of catch up. And then I know you're looking, that is a concern. But it's really important to have the staff, have the people, and this is your chance with the biennial budget and the stormwater rate study and that stormwater fee increase that has to get to King County so that they can raise those fees. With the taxes, I think you have to get it by the end of November, early December. I don't know the actual date. But that's super important. And I will tell you, from looking at the things that have been assembled by the stormwater staff that you passed on October 18th for stormwater CIPs, you're either missing a few things, like Tamarac just has been blasted off the map. We don't even have a stormwater CIP anymore, but we still have problems, even though we've been reporting them since 2007. And then there's other places that are actively flooding in the city that if they're ignored, they can cause a problem. And I'll bring up the Louis Thompson landslide again that happened in 2015. It was ignored, and it cost $1.3 million to fix it. So I think you should look at that. I'm hoping that you'll pull it off the consent tonight so at least could be considered either before or after the budget hearing. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you. The person that just walked in, do you have a public comment? Oh, yeah. You can go. Unless it's on one of the public hearings. Sorry.
Okay. Perfect timing. So, dear City Council members, City Management Stormwater Staff, I've lived in Samamish since about 2006. My daughters go to Eastlake High School.
Could you please state your name, please?
Oh, sorry. My name's Jita Sahoda. I didn't say that. Sorry. I live here in Samamish. So my daughters and I, we use a library. We come to the public events. We enjoy living in Samamish. My daughters love Eastlake High School. So I'm coming in because just regarding our area in Tamarac, the fire department responds to all of our calls in our area. Sometimes trees come down. They block our roads. And the fire department comes out. The Samamish City Police Department and the EMS, Emergency Medical Services, come to our calls also in Tamarac. But our property taxes are going up, and I understand that Samamish needs an increase. Plus, the city receives a portion of all of the annual taxes paid to city, county. But per consent of agenda, item three for tonight, the city's master fee schedule for the stormwater management fees are going up to 6.25% from $396 to $420.75 per house, based on the stormwater rate study. So what doesn't make sense to me is that our Tamarac neighborhood pays all of these city-required fees, but we can't get any stormwater retrofit or drainage improvements for Tamarac. Many neighbors for years have made complaints, including myself, to the city, but our project is not being included even in the next six years. So just again, I was here at the last meeting. 716,200 Tamarac has paid to surface water management fees to the city from 2000 to 2022. And $70,000 to the system development charges have been paid for 45 new homes constructed in Tamarac since 2000. $1 million, just about $1,100,000 or so subtotal paid from Tamarac to the city. And annual taxes paid each year are in excess of $200,000. So the annual revenue from Tamarac to the city equals $280,000 to $345,000 from city taxes, stormwater fees, and real estate taxes. Plus, there's 40 vacant lots still remaining, so 80% of Tamarac's been developed. So if you can count or might choose these total numbers, it's over $2 million. So our Tamarac dollars paid goes to help other areas in the city while we have to maintain our own roads, which saves the city a lot of money. I think it's valid to ask from our daughters and myself that Tamarac can get paid, can get some resources or some help. So I asked the City Council.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So if you just can take a look at that. And I've emailed you guys as well. You can take a look at it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah. All right, do we have anyone else that didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay, I was hopeful with the movement. All right, moved to online.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. You can use, if you're calling by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. Okay, I will promote the first commenter. Mr. Stickney.
Hello, City Council members. Paul Stickney, Samamish. My comment on the first of November was about decreasing and increasing housing to alleviate housing supplies that are out of balance, add holistic assets, and the advantages are far greater for the community and city than for development interests. On November 8th, I made a comment about the recently released Housing Needs Assessment and the proposed housing growth target. Both are off-base. They're structurally lacking and somewhat erroneous at their core as neither have analyzed and identified housing gap numbers for all those living and/or working in Samamish currently or projected over a lifetime of housing needs. Tonight is my third installment. Here's my hand-drawn, I'll turn in a nicer one, the Samamish Circle of Housing. And this is spelled S-Y-R-C-L-E. And the reason it starts with an S-Y is it stands for synchronizing. And synchronizing means adjusting housing supplies, collaboration, and agreement on housing supplies. And many interests have been arranged into a common cause position. Well, you'll see in my hand-drawn circle, S-Y-R-C-L-E, the letters B, C, E, and D. The B is from D-E-I-B, to belong in Samamish. Very important. The C has a couple of meanings, both climate change and conservation, both extremely important to the shape of our housing supplies and community. The E and the D apply to all economic groups and all of the demographic groups in Samamish existing now, over the comp plan horizon, cycle of life, and seven generations. Here's my ask. Get all housing gaps and all the data called for by B-C-E-D, synchronized Circle of Housing, and then appropriately alter the Housing Needs Assessment and the growth target. Then craft the Housing Strategy Plan, and then synchronize the entire comp plan accordingly. Since incorporation in 1999, housing policy and numbers have been rooted too deeply in subjective fiction as compared to facts, consequences, informed inputs, and verity-based housing choices. Modestly adjusting housing supplies based on planned and unplanned housing need changes over life will yield authenticity of place and enrich and sustain our great city. Appreciate the chance to speak.
Thank you so much.
If there are any other commenters, please raise your hand. I do not see any other commenters. Back to you, mayor.
All right, thank you so much. So next, we'll move on to consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, can I remove eight and nine? I believe it is, the two.
Eight and nine, okay. And then we'll put that.
Four panel analysis studies.
Yeah, where do we put that? In new business, right after the hearings?
Excuse me, mayor.
Yes, sorry.
Nor is, yeah, those items would go under new business.
Cool.
So it would be after we get through the public hearing process.
All right, sounds good. So we can vote to approve with those two taken out? All right, so any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the consent calendar minus eight and nine, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, 7-0 consent. Almost passes. Next, we'll go to presentations, proclamations for Small Business Saturday. Councilmember Stewart, do you have that up?
All right, thank you. Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of Samamish, Washington, celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7 of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 88% of consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them also encouraged family and friends to do so, too. And whereas 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020. And more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation. And whereas Samamish, Washington, supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore Kayla Clark, Mayor of Samamish, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, does hereby proclaim November 26, 2022 as Small Business Saturday. And we urge the residents of our community and the communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
All right, thank you for the infomercial. That was awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I loved it. Yeah. No, it's great. All right, so next, we have our public hearing. So the first is on the levying of the property taxes for 2023. So I think if we have any public comment in the room or on Zoom, we can go to that. Good here. Okay.
If you wish to provide comment for this hearing, please raise your hand. Star nine on the phone if you're calling by phone. I see no commenters.
So I'm closing this, then moving to you, right? All right, so public hearing, second reading, relating to the levying of regular property taxes for 2023, including the allowable 1% increase, is closed. Okay, and then Erin.
Yeah, so this information hasn't changed from the November 1st public hearing, so it's back to you, council, to consider.
Awesome. All right, council, I will open it up for any discussion or perhaps a motion to approve.
So I'll move that the City Council approve an ord-
Sorry, I didn't see. Councilmember Stewart, sorry, I was not looking. Sorry, go ahead.
No worries. I think we're on the same wavelength. So I would like to move that we pass an ordinance for the city of Samamish relating to the levying of regular property taxes for 2023, including the allowable 1% increase.
I'll second that.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
If I may speak to my motion. Budgeting is probably one of the hardest jobs we have. We recognize that, you know, inflation is real. It's affecting people's pocketbooks. Unfortunately, inflation is real here at the city as well. And our employees also are, you know, getting hit in the pocketbooks. And we'll be discussing, oh, we already passed, right, the fee or the rate increases. And again, our employees are getting just a cost of living adjustment, right? And that was 4.7%, if I recall correctly. So if you do the math, right, a 1% increase in property tax is not even going to cover just a cost of living increase for our current employees. So it's not without a lot of thought and deliberation in considering whether or not we're going to increase the property taxes. I do want to remind folks that it is not a full-on 1% increase on your home value or even your property taxes overall. It is a 1% increase on the little itty-bitty-bitty piece that Samamish gets. So I realize that every dollar can sometimes count, but it is not hopefully going to be an amount that makes or breaks any of our households here in Samamish. I will call out that there are resources through King County. If you are someone who is having a hard time, please do go to the King County website. There are resources to help, and please do reach out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? So all those in favor of passing ordinance 2022-545, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that one is good to go. So next, our public hearing on the 23-24 biennial budget. Erin's kindly looking for, awesome, got one. Thank you so much. Jita? Oh, that was you. Oh, for the other one. Perfect. Okay. Oh, no, yeah. If you have anything else to chat about. Okay, we'll move to online.
Okay, if you wish to provide comment at this hearing, please raise your hand. If calling by phone, please press star nine. Okay, I see no commenters. Back to you, mayor.
All right, thank you so much. So I am closing this public hearing on a doc- Sorry, on a, oh. Yes, sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Mary Victor?
Hi, my name's Mary Victor. I wanted to comment on the public hearing for the biennial budget in general. First of all, I know that it's hard to keep the expenses down, and it's hard to figure out what the revenue is and everything. But I will tell you that the people are super important. I know that the number of FTEs has been talked about for full-time equivalents. And I know that we're trying to do things to keep people in this city. But just I want to give you a couple examples of why the people are important. The Urban Forestry Management Plan was started in 2015 and passed, and we really haven't heard the updates from that. I thought maybe in December we'd get an update, but they really need a forester. If we don't have somebody to look at the trees and do things from the inside, it's just not going to happen. I believe that's in the package, and I think you should. I believe that's in the package, and I think you should fully support that, and I'm glad to see that. Another example is, you know, from Tamarack and from living in landslide hazard areas and critical areas and geo-hazards which are coming up in the next two years, we've been able to get a bunch of code changes done over the years, which are very good. It doesn't help us for past development, but it should help us for new development. And in the past, we did have five emergency surface water ordinances in Inglewood and Tamarack area. So that's very important. And the thing that's important about that is if you don't have regulations, you can't even tell your neighbor what to do, you can't call the city. If you do have the regulation, there's a chance you can talk to your neighbor and you can call the city. If you don't have a code compliance officer, no one comes out, no one responds. A neighbor cuts down trees, the neighbor next door goes, hey, look at the view, and they start cutting down trees. And then the neighbor on the row above goes, hey, look at that view, and they cut down the trees. And once those significant trees are cut, like, it doesn't matter if you plant an eight-foot tree or a two-foot tree or a 50-foot, you just can't replace it. And a lot of times if people don't cut them down, what they'll do is they'll just trim them a whole lot. And when you trim them a whole lot, a tree's like a soldier. If it's by itself, it knocks down, but if they stand together in a forest and a grove, then they're like an army. So if you do not have a code compliance enough people or inspectors, you can't implement the code that you do. And I know that it costs money to hire people, and I know that there's fees, and I know it's terrible to be the narc in your area, but if you do see something go wrong, sometimes people just don't know, sometimes they're doing it. And I've seen quite a few lots, particularly in Tamarack, where people started, they took too many trees, they overexcavated, and the lots sit there for two years, the building permit expires, somebody buys it, they try again, they let it sit for a year, in two more years, they try, and then it forecloses. We've had single foreclosures, double foreclosures, triple foreclosures. We have four houses that are still building from 2013. I think one finished, there's another one sitting, and that happens. So it's really serious. So I hope that you will give staff what they need for the support so that they can implement and force and try to help people and also write educational materials, because that's actually the best way to keep people from doing it wrong in the first place. I think most people try to do the right thing, but they just don't know. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you so much. All right, anyone else? All good? Okay, so I will now be closing this hearing on adopting the 2324 biennial budget.
Mayor, before you do that, I wasn't sure if there was any online.
Oh, yeah.
There are, there's no one who has raised their hand. Thank you.
Cool. All right, that one is closed. And then next, I think Erin, we discussed, we'll do our part first and then you? Or vice versa, yeah.
Yeah, I can provide some context just for the overview of what's on tonight. So we've had the first public hearing on the budget ordinance, and now we just had the second budget hearing, a public hearing on the budget ordinance. You'll note in the council packet, the agenda bill, that included the copy of the ordinance for the preliminary budget. There was also a listing of possible council amendments there as a starting point, so possible cuts that have been mentioned. So that's, I can bring up a screen if that's helpful to walk through that attachment.
Yeah, definitely, and I know we discussed, you know, we can start with the motion and second it, and then do all of our discussion there, Council, unless you would like Erin to present first. Does anyone have any strong feelings? Councilmember Stewart?
Oh, I was, I don't have, just waiting and.
Oh, no, I still have your number up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, that's what I was like. Does anyone have a preference on that? Cool. You guys want to do? Yeah.
I move to adopt the 2023-2024 biennial budget in a total amount of 312,663,171, as reflected in Table A, and to make additional expenditure cuts as reflected in Table B.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded, so if you'd like to speak to your motion, or I'll open it up for discussion, and we have all our finance, well, two-thirds of them, I guess, here, for any other questions or discussion. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so I would like to, I move that we actually add back in the Natural Resources and Sustainability Coordinator position. And if I may speak to my motion. While again, I think we need to review things, and we may need to make some additional cuts, we can't wait on sustainability. We're already behind. We are only one of four cities across King County that's a member of the K-4C that does not have a climate action plan, and I think we're the only city that's a member of K-4C that hasn't started our climate action plan. So I feel like this is really critical, this position, as the job description is written, will also help with the implementation of the Urban Forestry Management Plan, among other things. And I just feel like, we just can't wait. And the cost, the longer-term cost of not doing some of these things now will be infinitely higher. So for those reasons, while we are looking at ways to tighten the budget during these sort of macroeconomic headwinds, I feel like this is a really essential position. Thank you.
Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. I would say that we all want this headcount, we would love to see it, but I am not in favor of adding it at this time. And the reason why is because we don't have anything started. There's a huge ramp that needs to be kicked off with a lot of other moving pieces that need to be put into place in order to make this particular hire to be effective. So I would caution us and say we should hold off.
Councilmember Trine?
So for clarification, is this an amendment to the original motion, then? Okay. I would agree with Councilmember Howe on this one. Thank you.
I did have, oh, Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I would say I support Councilmember Stewart by adding this back in, because if we're looking to adopt a climate action plan in one year, I would say that deferring this would hinder that adoption in one year.
I'm probably going to throw it to our city manager. I know that we do have either the RFP in process for a consultant for the climate action plan. So for me personally, this is something I would like to add mid-buy instead of doing right away. I'd rather have a climate action plan at least started, or at least a consultant hired before, but yeah, please go ahead if you have, or if that was correct. Okay.
That's correct, Mayor. I believe you heard from Community Development Director David Pyle that that process is supposed to be done by the end of next year, and so that's when we would have the full plan, and it would come before Council, for Council approval.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments. I think because nothing has been started is the very reason why we need to have this coordinator in place. This would be the person who would lead, and I would assume manage, the consultant that gets hired to create the climate action plan. Having that person here on the ground from the beginning will help, they will help be able to drive the public process and the public input process, and be able to help focus us, and we would have some in-house expertise to help us do that. When you look at the cities that, surrounding that have been the most successful at creating these plans and implementing them, it is the cities that have a dedicated resource to this. I would also say that getting someone in to help manage it as part of the comp plan process will simply help the rest of our staff as well, right? The information that we gather during this process should be integrated very closely into the comp plan, and this will reach across different departments. This isn't just a Department of Community Development, or Public Works, or Parks, it's really all of those areas, right? If we really want an effective climate action plan, it has to be about policy, it has to be about projects, and it actually is even part of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. So for all of those reasons, I think we need to have that person sooner rather than later to work with that consultant to make sure we get the best results for that climate action plan. And then that way, when the climate action plan is done, we can start implementing it right away, there's no delay, and there's no ramp up for that person. Thank you.
Councilmember Howe?
This may be more of a question, but I had thought that Public Works had stated that they were capable of starting that entire process without that headcount at this time. Is that incorrect?
Thank you, Councilmember Howe. Just for clarification, that, so David Pyle has been sending me messages, so just to clarify, the climate action plan, as we received the grant from the state, the climate action plan is being accomplished through the Community Development Department. It is part of the comprehensive plan process, and we manage as such as part of that process. Now, we can, other work we can do outside of that, and Councilmember Howe, in reference to what you had alluded to, we do have some added capacity in-house through my office to be able to tackle some of these other items in the meantime. And so my proposal to all of you was that we tackle that in-house to start, once the plan is completed, then we reassess where we need to be. And I appreciate and understand where Councilmember Stewart is, but that is where, what Councilmember Howe is alluding to.
Thank you, because I think that gives us a path. And given the fact that we've just had to make such a hard decision about raising taxes, I think that we need to look for austerity measures now.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I do have a question regarding the role of the Sustainability Coordinator, and that this person is supposed to help manage the Citizen Advisory Group that we're going to start for climate, is that true? And if we don't have this coordinator, will somebody on staff be able to start this group and manage?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I believe in the write-up for this, I think this was, if there is one, that this person might be the person that could coordinate that group. I think if, in the absence of that person, we would find somebody on staff, I think we could find, at least to start it off, to work with that group in-house. If that's where Council wants us to go, and I think that's where it is, we will find a way to staff that, at least in the short term, and then based on what the climate action plan says and the work we do beyond that, then we could decide to make changes at the mid-biennium, or even in between, if there's funding available, we could bring somebody on on a limited-term position through the end of the biennium and reassess at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nupure?
This question is for our city manager, interim, or, yeah.
Still interim.
Still interim, yeah. So that one staff person that you said from your staff who could come and help, is this already an existing employee who can help with running, you know, or working for the climate plan that we want to adopt, or any strategies, or is that somebody who's already stretched thin, going to be stretched even thinner?
Believe it or not, it is, as I've shared with all of you, we are pretty much fully staffed now, and what that means is that we had a position that had been vacant for quite a while, that we finally figured out how, what we wanted to do with that position and filled it. So that person is on staff, she is new, and has some capacity, and I think that this is an opportunity for that person to at least step into the role for the time being, depending on Council's direction here, that we could cover that at least to start with, and then we could reassess as we move forward.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you. I know that this position was on our list of positions that we were going to make as a budget cut, but if we decided to keep this position, is there another position that we could switch out to make that same budget cut?
Thank you, Councilmember. I think with all these positions, they're all a little bit different, depending on whether or not you, it is a position that would potentially generate permit revenue for the work that they do. For instance, like, just to use an example, development review engineer, that is one that potentially, we could rotate out and continue to use that position using contracts as opposed to in-house, but that position is offset by permit revenue that it might bring in for doing the work. So there, it's not dollars to dollars the same for any one of these. As you can see, they're all slightly different, depending on the position.
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, so if I understand it, what you're saying is that you have a new person who would lead the Citizen Climate Group, and then there would be somebody else who would be overseeing the consultant to do the work on the climate action plan?
Yes, the climate action plan is kicked off, that process is kicked off and will be housed in Community Development.
Well, just to be clear, what's been kicked off is very limited scope, right? Right now, what's been kicked off is simply vehicle miles traveled, and I think there's one other element that are required. That's the only thing that's been kicked off. And the last time David Pyle was here, he made it quite clear that he did not have the capacity to get that work done. Now subsequently, we've gone back and met with him, and he said that the consultant that is going to do the vehicle miles traveled work can also take this on, but he did not necessarily indicate that he had extra capacity from a staff perspective, simply that that consultant could take on a larger scope of work. But I don't believe that the whole, the totality of the climate action plan work has been kicked off yet, has it?
David is sharing with me in the real-time, yay, technology, is that the comp plan consultant would manage that, that particular contract. David is happy to join us if that would be helpful for Council. Krista, would you promote David, please?
I just, I mean, this is, this is one of our top priorities, right? We have two, two of our top priorities were, you know, the climate and one was DEIB. We're making sure that there's an employee to lead up the DEIB effort, which I think is critical, and this is another one. And I just don't think understaffing it or stretching the staff, as I understand it, right, Community Development is also, you know, their long-range planner, that was one of the heads that they had asked for that they're not going to get. So I just, I just don't think we should be underselling this one right now. It's so critical, and we've heard from so much of the community how critical this is.
Thank you, Councilmember. If I may, I'd like to turn it over to David just to clarify what's going on with the climate action plan work.
Thank you, Scott. So just to clarify, there, we have not started the climate action plan itself, that's pending Council approval of the budget amount for that work. We have started the greenhouse gas reduction and vehicle miles traveled reduction strategies work that is grant-funded and was kicked off earlier this year. That work will roll into the climate action plan work and will largely support the foundation of the climate action plan. The climate action plan is also, really needs to be a separate track, parallel to the comprehensive plan, where there are regular check-ins and cross-referencing occurring as the two projects progress, and ultimately become one project at the end, where the climate action plan is rolled into the comprehensive plan update. Some things to consider about the proposed Natural Resource and Sustainability Coordinator position is that, first of all, we wouldn't be able to hire the position for anywhere from two to six months out from the Council's approval of the agenda item. That's average hiring. It could happen faster, I would argue, but, you know, our HR staff does do work as fast as they can, and the applicant pools out there are not always the best right now. We also would have to then ramp up and get the Sustainability Coordinator up to speed on city policies, projects, policy work, how it happens. So there's quite a steep learning curve before they could actually take on ownership of a project like a climate action plan, which is a very intense, community engagement-driven project that would probably take them anywhere from six to nine months of learning to ramp up their ability to take on that project. We do have several other parallel projects with the comprehensive plan, like the Housing Action Plan. We have the Transfer of Development Rights Project, we have the Critical Areas Project, we have the code updates that are related to housing and the HAP, and we really need to keep all of those projects very closely related to each other as we see all of those tracks progress and ultimately merge into the mainstream of the comprehensive plan. It's quite a complex process, and adding another individual in a different department to the mix could cause some complexity in that. So while we initially indicated that we didn't have capacity for this back, I think, in October when we came to you, we really want, we've reshuffled some things, and we've looked at how to better manage this project, being we've looked at how to better manage this project, being the Comprehensive Plan and all of the associated projects, and feel that we have a very sound strategy in place at this point for us to get to the conclusion of the CAP, the HAP, the, the Transfer of Development Rights Project, the Critical Areas Update Project, the Development Code Review with the Comprehensive Plan, and ultimately get a Comprehensive Plan in front of the council that could be approved, at least to be routed to Commerce sometime in the, the late summer of '24, so that it's ultimately approved and certified by the state in December of '24. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, David, thank you for your always thorough answers. I really do appreciate that. If I understand your timeline correctly, it's anywhere from two to six months to hire someone, and then it would be six to nine months for ramp up. So if we don't approve this position until the mid-buy, then we potentially wouldn't have someone to start implementing the Climate Action Plan until, if I do some quick math, late 2024. So we'd have a Climate Action Plan done in 2023, but there'd be potentially a year or more before we'd have someone ramped up to start implementing it. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. If, if there was an option, I, I would suggest that, if it was something the council wanted to add, that you add, but you add with deferred hiring, to, to pick up this position sometime in the, in the middle of the year, when we already have a strong footing with our Climate Action Plan. They could come in at the tail end of the Climate Action Plan, become oriented as to what it includes, get trained up in the city and how we operate, and then they'd be able to hit the ground running with implementation once the Climate Action Plan is adopted.
And then one last question, because I know another big area that we want to start working on is actually implementing the Urban Forestry Management Plan. And it was my understanding that this position would also be in charge of leading that effort to start doing implementation of the Urban Forestry Management Plan. So is that, where would that be covered if this position doesn't get hired?
Well, that, with that requires some budget for implementation, so it wouldn't necessarily do us much good to hire a Natural Resources Coordinator to implement urban forest management strategies if, if we don't have the corresponding minimal budget to go with that. There are some things that a Natural Resources Coordinator could do in terms of implementing the Urban Forest Management Plan. However, there is a limited number that don't involve some, some minimal budget. So just keep in mind that if you are bringing onboard a Natural Resources Coordinator to serve as an urban forest implement, to serve in a role of implementation for the Urban Forest Management Plan, that there, there would also potentially need to be a, a small partner budget to go along with that, so that they had resources to work with, and it wasn't just a staff person.
Got it. So, so am I to understand, then, that the current budget does not include any funding to implement the Urban Forestry Management Plan?
There was previously some funding that went along with the, the Urban Forester that DCD had put forward. When we heard from the council that there was a strong interest in adding a Sustainability Coordinator position, we looked at what other positions we could bundle with that, and the logical choice was to bundle the, the Urban Forester position with Sustainability Coordinator, and we created the Natural Resources and Sustainability Coordinator position. There was a partner budget that went along with the, the Urban Forester position that was for implementation of Urban Forest Management Plan. And I do not believe that that was carried forward in the DCD budget. I don't know if the city manager's budget included that, that, that amount.
Thank you, Councilmember, and David. Yes, that, those dollars were included in the budget. They might still be sitting in DCD in that budget, but we'll transfer it over to, to where it needs to go. To answer your question, Councilmember Stewart, if that position is not filled right away, like I said, I do have some staff capacity to be able to kick off that program as well. At least at a minimum until you, we get to a point certain where, to your point previously you've made about getting to a point where we know what our finances look like moving forward, or we get to a point where we say we have a, a true body of work that needs to kick off right now. So again, it is where council's preference on this. We, we have a plan internally, we chatted, we can, we can make it work with existing staff. If council feels more comfortable having an assigned, assigned position, I think to David's point, we could delay the implementation and save some dollars that way to, to a little bit later than, in the next year.
What would it look like for a, a delayed hire? Would we be able to cut a quarter of this budget amount? So instead of doing it at a mid-buy, which would, I'd assume, cut it in half, would that be something where we just cut 25% of it out and, and say, we approve this, but we delay the hiring?
Yes, in all reality, that's what it would amount to. I think the, the, the main point, at least going into the potential cuts, was the ongoing cost and being, and recognizing that even if you cut out a little bit on the front end, it doesn't change the ongoing cost of that position moving forward.
Scott, if, if I could add one thing, I, I was texted by Kelly Hildy, and she indicated that we do have $110,000 in the DCD budget for urban forest implementation. That could be ported over to go along with this position if it, if it was added. I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, thank you. So on the floor, we have the recommended budget plus an amendment. So we would vote on that unless anyone wants to amend an amendment, or how does this work?
You vote on the amendment first.
Yes, I, I believe Councilmember Stewart made a proposed amendment to the main amendment.
Copy that. All right, so all those in favor of, wait, just the amendment or both?
Just the amendment.
Thank you.
Just the amendment first.
All those in favor of the amendment to add back in the Natural Resources and Sustainability Coordinators, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Mine was a aye, sorry.
Yours was an aye?
Mine was a aye.
Thank you. All right, so what's that for?
Four, three.
Four, three? So that will go back in. And now...
Do you have an action for the nays?
Me, Kent, Karen. Yep. Sorry, where are we at now? Recommended motion, Deputy Mayor Lamb's motion and Councilmember O'Farrell's second for adopting the budget as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, seven, zero for that one. Nice. So that will be ordinance 2022-546. Are you guys free then, Erin and Chris? Nice. Thank you all for your work. I know this took months and weeks and weeks and months and years. I think I got gray hair, so thank you all so much.
Thank you, council.
All right, so next we are going to new business, which would be consent items eight and nine. And I think you said Anjali might be on? I don't know if she's still on to chat about, or Councilmember Stewart, if you had. I know you had some emails chatting about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We're prepared, or Anjali is available to speak to those two items. The City Clerk's office will promote her momentarily.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you. Did you want me to go ahead and ask? So just for the public's sake, there are two consent items there to hire a consultant to do an assessment of our fire stations, as we're doing the one that's currently being remodeled and one for future remodels, to assess solar panels. While I am fully supportive of doing such an assessment and being able to hopefully add solar panels to the fire stations, I was a little bit concerned at the cost. The first one was $15,000, and I think the second one was $10,000. And I was a little bit concerned about that, so I wanted to understand a little bit more and, and maybe understand why we wouldn't potentially just put it out for an RFP. I understand there's a little bit of challenges when it's a public agency versus normal commercial, but it, I, there are many companies that will come and do those assessments there. They actually don't take much time, as I understand it. I've actually participated in a couple. The, the modeling is pretty easy. They actually use existing mapping technologies to understand what the roof configuration looks like, and they have data on what the sun and shade is year-round. They generally plug that into a model and can come back with, here's the proposed number of, you know, a couple options on how many solar panels, how much that would generate, and the corresponding cost with each option. So that just seemed like, you know, when you add $25,000, or even just the first one, $15,000 to the overall cost, which I think was roughly in the ballpark of 90K, that's a fairly significant increase, right? That's a, that's more than a 15% increase in the cost and would certainly delay the payback period quite a bit. So I didn't know if there was an option to, to find a different way to do it and not have to pay quite that much money for something that likely would only take someone, you know, a couple of days of effort at most. Thanks.
Good evening, council. Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. And our consultant is not able to be here this evening, so I'm going to do my best to see if I can explain this. But it is a lot of money. I, I will agree to that. But as we shared with council earlier today, staff has tried to reach out to several folks and just haven't gotten a complete answer or a complete solution. And we are continuing to go that route. And so I think the closest we've come to is to find out that for this particular fire station, given the size of the building and the amount of power that will be consumed, that it is gonna, it's probably going to be 60 years before you would break even. And, and, you know, they generally say that solar panels last about 20 years. So I think at a very high level, we have that information. So I think it would be important to know what is council looking for, because if we are trying to, we can bid something, but to bid something, we would need a consultant to write us some performance specs to make sure that you are going to have, the three or four people that bid are all bidding a certain standard. If you are looking for a consultant, we cannot bid on a consultant. By Washington laws, we have to just pick a consultant based on, on their expertise, but we can't shop for a consultant based on the fee for which they would do this work. And if Carrie Sanders is there, if you can clarify this, that would be great. So I just wanted to make sure we understand what it is that council is really looking for. We could go the route of, I think we had a request to do it for Fire Station 83, and that's why the contract was written for that first. And, and then there was a request to add it in for Fire Station 82, when we brought a design contract to council. So if you would like, we could do one of them first. Their roof structures are similar, but the sun exposure is different. So you will get different results for both the fire stations. To do them together, the consultant is offering an efficiency of scale, and it's $25,000 for both. But if we were to do them separately, it's $15,000 apiece. One other thing to add is the Sazan consultant is on the cities, on the roster that the city uses, which is the MRSC roster.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'd love to maybe talk about this more. I don't know if there's an urgency to this, but I think there are potentially a couple of, of options we could go down that would not cost $15,000 to $25,000. And I just would love to talk more, just to check the math, because when I saw the, the email, it, it said that there was a cost estimate of roughly $90,000. We spent about 60, not quite 6,500 a year, I think, on costs for energy. When I do that math, it's only, it's under 14 years for a payback period, so I'm not sure, like, where the 60 years is coming from.
The way I read that is there's a 25% savings on those costs. So if it's $6,000 a year, your savings are about 1,500 a year. But again, that's, that's a very quick exercise done by someone, so without the consultant being here, I don't know if we can go entirely based on that math.
Would it be okay to take this offline? Is there an urgency to get this done tonight, or could we have a, an offline conversation and see? Unless the rest of council's fine, I just feel like it's, it will add to the cost significantly just to do this assessment, which may make it unfeasible.
I don't mind dropping it off and then putting it somewhere ingenious, I'm sure.
I mean, again, if we're looking to save money, this doesn't seem cost-effective at this moment.
Yeah, I just want to check with Anjali to make sure that we're not missing any sort of timeline, particularly given that the original direction was from council to go out and hire a consultant separately to do the assessment on both of them. So I just want to be clear that we're, that if we're going to change direction potentially, that's fine. I just wanted to be clear about that part, that, you know, from, from our perspective, we're just trying to be reflective of what council's desires were at that point in time. So Anjali, if you would, is there, are we missing any deadlines or pushing to either December 6th or 13th? Does that, do we cause us to change anything?
We are proceeding with Fire Station 82 with a roughened conduit for potential future solar panels, so we should be okay. It may not fall in the same timeline as, as the bid, but we should be still, we should still be able to get it done.
All right. Thank you so much, Anjali, for jumping on.
Sure.
And then, yeah, when we actually give you time, we, we can bring the consultant or whatever that looks like, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Do we need to do anything as far as?
I think if, if you want to take action, to be specific, you could table these items until, pick your meeting, either the 6th or the 13th of December.
Move to table, to a date.
I guess when the consultant can come.
Uncertain, in, in December.
Yeah, we can, we can figure out what night the consultant is available and come back with that.
Second.
Where council wants to go.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. So Anjali, we'll look to you, whatever works for you and the consultant, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
So next we have our council reports. I know Deputy Mayor, you have one.
Yep, mine was just, I had a pick meeting, Public Issues Committee meeting, and it was just following up on the items that we discussed, which was 2023 SCA legislative priorities that is going to come back to our council to approve when I go back to the NICS Public Issues Committee meeting. And another one is the Waste Diversion in King County Re-Plus Plan, which we'll, we'll be getting a staff presentation then on December 6th.
Great, thank you so much. Does anyone else have a verbal or city manager? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind, since this is technically the last meeting of November, that next week is the Thanksgiving break. So City Hall will be closed on Thursday and Friday of next week for the Thanksgiving break. So just want to be, let everyone in the public know about that as a reminder. I know everyone's pretty familiar with Thanksgiving, but just in case, I want to be clear about that. And we will be posting on the website, making sure that everybody knows that City Hall will be closed those two days.
Great, thank you. So last week, lastly, we do have one executive session, RCW 42.30.110.1F. City Council may take action after. Do you think 20 minutes to start, council? No? Yeah? 20 minutes? Sound good to start with? So we'll be back at 8?
Saying 8 is rounding up, that sounds good.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, 8:00 PM, and then always can extend. All right, we will be back. Thank you. All right, council, thank you so much. Okay, so I'm just going to say a few things first and then open it up to council. So our executive session, the RCW 42.30.110.1F, this has been inspired by complaint received regarding a text message from our former city manager, Dave Rudat, to former council member and mayor, Kristi Mauchow, and current council member, Kent Trine, asking them to delete records. Asking a public officer to delete records is contrary to city policy and to state law. So I know at minimum, this has been sent to law enforcement, and I'm definitely going to pass this off to you, Scott, for any other things you'd like to add.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. So in response, council will recall that at, at the previous meeting, we brought forward changes to the city's employee handbook to strengthen and clarify... employee handbook to strengthen and clarify the use of, or the, or the non-use, if you will, of private, uh, email or any other, um, communications tools for the use of city business for city staff. That, uh, happened and has been implemented into our handbook. We did a training, an all-city training from our clerk's department where this was included as part of the training that happened, um, I believe, a week ago, Lita? Yeah, a week ago, on Monday. Uh, and then we also, we are gonna follow up with all staff to have them sign a declaration saying that they understand and have read the revised component of the handbook. Um, so that's what we have done internally. In addition, I would, uh, just share out, we are planning to bring back to council a code of conduct that would apply to all boards and commissions, which this would be a part of, and also potentially a code of ethics, so that everyone is operating on the same page and has the same understanding of what their role and responsibility is, uh, as a representative of the city. Uh, so that's where we stand at the moment in terms of, of, uh, taking action in response to being notified of, of this, uh, the aforementioned text to delete public records.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, so council, I will open it up. I know we do have a few options here. Um, we are down to five council members now, so we don't have the whole body, um, for discussion, but if anyone has anything they would like to raise or... Anything? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just wanna, I don't know if you mentioned that, um, Councilmember Howe is, is excused for the rest of the meeting, um, with a family emergency. Um, and Councilmember Trine just left. So just so the public knows why we're down to five. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
So this is, um, this is a very hard topic. Um, we, as elected officials, we all took training to not delete public records. Um, it is an egregious violation of our code. And, um, so with that, um, I motion to censure Councilmember Trine, um, and to strip him of his committees that he is currently on and, um, committees that he would be applying for in 2023.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to that motion? Was there any other discussion?
Um, can I just add a few more words? Um, so, you know, he was asked to delete emails, and like I said, um, that's something we know that we're not supposed to do. And with that, there was a significant, um, monetary loss, if you will, that came about because, um, we had the opportu-, I, I don't even know if I'm kind of allowed to say this. We had the opportunity to, um, separate with our former city manager, um, for cause, and we weren't able to because we didn't have that information. Um, so, I, you know, like I said, this is a very, this is a very hard decision, um, on my part, but I, I feel like, um, it is definitely warranted, especially when it comes to this, this, this financial loss that, um, our city has sustained. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, the Open, uh, Public Meetings Act and the Public Records Act, um, also often called sunshine laws, exists for very good reason. Um, we are here representing the community, and we are supposed to do the business of the city in public, uh, out in daylight. That's for good reason. Sometimes it's hard. Uh, sometimes the discussions we have to have here on the dais aren't always easy, um, but we do it because open government, um, is really the foundation to our democracy. And when people wantingly and purposefully violate that trust, uh, it's hard for us to gain it back. Um, and I think it's really important for us as a body to make sure that the public knows we take this responsibility very seriously. We, we take an oath, um, whether elected or appointed, we take an oath to uphold the laws of Summamish, the laws of the State of Washington and, and the Constitution of the United States. Um, and I know that that this sounds like we're making it loftier than it is, but we're really not. Um, there were private, there was a private text message sent to at least two council members, um, telling them to delete conversations because people had requested public records about some topic and to delete them before they turned them over. Um, that's really serious that that message was even sent. Uh, it's serious that the council members that received that message didn't bring it to the full council body to take action, um, against the, at the time, city manager. Uh, and then to Deputy Mayor's point, um, the former city manager was then given a, a severance package, um, after having, you know, basically asked people to commit a felony. Um, there was an investigation done against that city manager because people complained about his ethics. This information was never brought forward, this evidence of, you know, at least bad judgment, to say the least. And I, I think that that's all really very serious. Um, and I think that at this moment in time, at this point in time, in our country and in our state and here in our city, we have to be willing to follow the law and to do the business of the city in public as, as prescribed by the law and as our, our community expects. And I, I think all of us here take that responsibility very seriously. So, thank you.
I would like to speak to this motion. So, um, uh, yeah, this is super difficult. So, um, yeah, I think for the motion at hand, um, I can understand and support the censure at this moment. Um, I am not quite there with the stripping of, um, his positions on boards, commissions, and all future, um, positions. So I don't know if, oh, sorry, Carrie, go ahead. Okay. Yeah, um, I don't know if that would be like an amendment on my, my part, but, um, I think as it stands, I don't, um, I don't know, because it was our, it has been sent to law enforcement, um, because I feel like, um, censuring is, you know, by way of resolution, if that's how we do it, um, it is still something. And so the stripping of the boards and commissions, in addition, um, I'm struggling with, but I will turn it over to Carrie if you have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't mean to cut the discussion short at all, um, but I did want to contribute, um, a point of clarification and then, um, a point regarding due process. So in terms of clarification, I understand the council's complaint is that Councilmember Trine nor then, uh, Councilmember and Mayor Kristi Mauchow did not make anyone aware of the text from former city manager Dave Rudat asking for records to be deleted. It's my further understanding that Councilmember Trine takes the position that he ignored the message and did not delete records. That's his position. I also want to note that under RCW 42 30 110 1F, which, you know, allows council, um, to conduct an executive session to receive and evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public officer, it further provides, however, upon the request of such officer, a public hearing or meeting open to the public shall be conducted upon such complaint or charge. Now, Councilmember Trine has left the meeting. As he was leaving, he said he didn't feel well. Um, that said, I think that the council should consider tabling the motion that is before you and allow time to provide him the opportunity for a public hearing if that is something he wants. Um, you can table to a date certain. You know, you can take this up at the December 6th meeting and allow him the opportunity for a public hearing at that meeting. Um, it's up to you, but I just wanted to remind you of, um, the due process public hearing provision in the RCW.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Councilmember Nupure?
Carrie, is that a just for, uh, one part of the motion? Like, is that just for censure, or is that also for any, or any action regarding the motion to have a due process?
I interpret the RCW as affording the public officer or employee the opportunity to have due process before any action is taken.
Thank you for clarifying.
Um, yeah. Uh, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. Um, I certainly, uh, as we're talking about how important it is to uphold the law, um, and process, uh, I move to table to a date certain of December 6th.
Second.
All right. It's been, uh, moved and seconded. Um, is there any discussion? Or would you like to speak to that?
Uh, yeah, again, I, I just, I think it's really, really important. We have rules for a reason. Um, and if we're not gonna follow the rules, we should just throw them out. Um, the, the not, the not providing that information not only violates the Public Records Act, it actually violates our own council rules, um, that state when there's a communication from a stakeholder, uh, that is relevant and important, that it be shared with the council body. Um, so if we're not gonna follow our own rules, then, then there's no point in having them. I think due process is fundamental, again, to our, to our democracy. It is, is about as American as it gets. So I think it's important, uh, that, that Councilmember Trine be afforded that. Uh, I think it's unfortunate, um, that he decided to leave, um, after leaving executive session and not stay for this, but we will, we will respect the law and we will provide him with that opportunity.
Councilmember Nupure?
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, with, with the previous motion and what preceded that, what you mentioned, I think there's definitely a sense that trust has been broken. And I think especially when, and in this day and age, when transparency and trust are so valued and so important, I think it's, it's really important that we give due process as well. Um, especially since not only, you know, uh, are we representing, are we one of the seven here, but, you know, when we, when we are on those commissions and committees, we represent the 64, 66,000 people, right? So I think it's really, really important for folks to know what happened. And so I strongly support that Councilmember Trine be given the opportunity to present his side of the story.
Yeah, thank you both, and thank you, Carrie. That's super helpful. Um, so if there's no further discussion, um, we will table until, uh, 6th December.
We have to actually vote on the tabling motion.
Oh, right.
We have to vote on the tabling.
Right, but, um, sorry. So I don't know who seconded.
I did.
You'd, oh, Councilmember Nupure. Okay, so, uh, if no other discussion, we will vote on tabling this until 6th December. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so 5-0, that will be on 6th December. Is there anything else that we need to follow up on? All right. Um, next I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All right. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, 5-0, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.